I'm convening back in open session. And close the executive session. All in motion?
So moved.
So moved. Heard the vote. All in favor and opposed. It's a vote. As you may see, we don't have anyone to say to pledge allegiance. In a moment of silence because of the nature of the meetings tonight. I didn't ask anyone to be here because I knew we'd be running late. So we're on our own if we can open up in a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To the republic, to which it is saying, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Heard the motion. All in favor and opposed. It's a vote. Like to read the open meeting statement. This meeting is being televised live by cable channel nine and being taped by a PBD access TV and also being recorded by our own city council stenographer. With that being said, we will move to hearings. For A, special permit. Would the clerk please read the announcement?
Notice is hereby given that the city council, the city PBD acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, June 14th, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Franco Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. On the application from Back Bay Sign, 651 Industrial Way, Wilmington, Mass. For a special permit seeking to install an exterior double-sided electronic message board with interactive touchscreen digital directory for the North Shore Mall at 210 Andover Street, PBD, Mass. Is filed in accordance with sections 11.4.8, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Council Edward A. Charis, City Council President.
Petitioner here?
Yes.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Jason Perillo. I'm with Back Bay Sign, 25 Temple Street, Somerville, Mass. We're here tonight to petition approval for an electronic message display. This is a kiosk, just like the ones that are inside the mall. This would be installed on mall property, on the sidewalk for the mall. The sign would be visible from Andover Street, but like I said, it's a kiosk, just like the ones that are inside the mall, so it's not very large. It's really meant for wayfinding to help mall patrons find the store that they're looking for. It's interactive so they can touch the screen. They can even send their device where the store that they're looking for. So that pretty much wraps up the petition.
Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody here that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Seeing none, is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition of the petition? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition of the petition? Hearing none. Counselor Charis.
Thank you, Chairman. As you said, these kiosks, the size of, you know, what is the size here?
The others, I'll give you the exact dimensions.
I know it was in here, but I thought you might have had it right off the top.
Yeah, I do. It's seven feet to the top and it's three foot five inches wide.
Right. So when you say they're visible from Andover Street, not...
Barely.
Yeah, barely. The structure itself?
Yeah.
Not the lettering and the wording and things like that?
Correct.
And as you said, this is people who actually just walk up to...
Yes.
The machine and interact with it that way and stuff. I have no problems with this. I think it's going to help the people navigate the mall or the other things that's coming in soon. So I have no approval, no problem. I'll be approving this, but open up to the rest of the council.
Other councils. Seeing none, Counselor Charis.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public meeting.
Councillors, you heard the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Charis.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit to, for the application of Back Bay Signs, 651 Industrial Way, Wilmington, Mass. For a special permit seeking an installation of exterior double-sided electronic measurable... Message, thank you. Message board with a interactive touchscreen digital directly for the North Shore Mall at 210 Andover Street, PBD, Mass. Is filed in ordinance with section 11.4.8, comma 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. So move.
Councillors, you heard the motion on the motion. Roll call.
Councillors O'Neill...
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Razagnall.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing, two absent.
Thank you very much.
Like to move to A, B. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the city council, the city PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, June 14th, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Franco Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. On the application from JR Inc., DBA, Zwoz Asian Cuisine, 5 Central Street, PBD, Mass. Requesting the transfer of an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television, radio, internet music, CD and DVD player, and live entertainment to include karaoke DJ and live music at said 5 Central Street, PBD, Mass. PBD City Council Council Edward A. Charis, City Council President.
Thank you. Would the petitioners please state your name and address for the record and what you would like to do?
Hi, good evening, councils. My name is Angie Rea Cole. I'm the paralegal of Attorney, Quest Common Service. Tonight I represent the applicant J and R in Doing Business of Zwoz Asian Cuisine. Standing next to me, his name is Ryan Wu. He is the manager and one of the co-owner of the proposed applicant. Our application is basically for, to propose, we are sitting the board to prove our entertainment license, which is basically the same as the one that granted to the prior owner. They are going to keep the same type of entertainment and hours remain unchanged. The non-live entertainment is for the background music and TVs. And the live entertainment will be same as the condition as maximum one piano and two instruments until 10:00 PM for live entertainment and the non-live will be contained until 11:00 PM, seven days a week.
Is anyone in the audience in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in the audience opposed and opposition?
Hearing none, Counselor Mitsoulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councillors, for your own information, they're coming in at the location of Mike &amp; Lil's at the corner of Central and Walnut Street. And I gave that license out in 1987 and they came back and they've held the hours of entertainment the same ever since and nothing is changing. They're just looking for a simple transfer. So, councillors, if you have any other questions on this, it's going to be a different type of restaurant. It's not going to be... Do you want to explain what type of restaurant you're with?
Actually, the restaurant is a restaurant. So the different type is they're serving different kind of food, mostly the Asian, Chinese, Taiwanese, Taiwanese or some Japanese sushi and sashimi. It's still remain as a fun dining restaurant.
Yep, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, they're looking for a simple transfer with the entertainment license. So if the councillors have any questions, please.
Councillors, any? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with Counselor Mitsoulis. I think that it's fully consistent with what was there before. It's a transfer. I am pleased to see that the hours are staying the same. We've got people that live upstairs. We've got people that live next door in the condos. So I think the hours are appropriate and glad to see that they are holding to that. And I wish them the best of luck in their new location as they open their new establishment. Thank you.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. In regards to this application, I just had one issue. There's, with the PBD Police Department Licensing Division, Detective Daniel Murphy wrote his brief two-sentence letter. There's no signature on that. So I don't know if that's a technicality that we can actually correct later on, but I don't have a signed copy of it.
Those are standard. That's how they all come over, councillor.
Okay, so no signatures required?
No, he just...
Thank you very much. It's not an issue then. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Counselor Mitsoulis.
Yeah, motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you. Welcome to PBD. Oh, I went real quick. I skipped right over Jim. I'm just trying to roll this night out, right? I apologize. Counselor Mitsoulis.
I totally understand, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve an entertainment license for J and R Incorporated Doing Business at Zwoz Asian Cuisine at 5 Central Street for the purpose to allow for a live and non-live entertainment license with the hours being the same as what they have. So move, Mr. Chairman.
You heard the motion this time. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Do you need roll call? Roll call, please.
Councillors O'Neill...
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Razagnall.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing, two absent.
Again, welcome to PBD. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Very welcome. Moving right along to... Moving to 4C. Would the clerk please read the announcement?
Notice is hereby given that the city council, the city PBD acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, June 14th, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Franco Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. On the application from Paul Don Hauser, care of Essex County Brewing Company LLC, 154 Ipswich Road, Boxford, Mass. For a special permit seeking to establish a brewery and brew pub at 58 Pulaski Street, PBD, Mass. Is filed in accordance with sections 4.2.5, 4.2.6, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Council Edward A. Charis, City Council President.
Thank you for coming. Can you please...
Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted with the, with my other position being the Director of Licensing for the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission and with the applicant being applying for a permit that will go directly from them to the ABCC and to prevent even the appearance of a conflict, I'd be recusing myself from this vote.
Okay, thank you. We'll come and get you. Can you please state your name and address for the, what you'd like to do?
Thank you. Paul Don Hauser, Essex County Brewery, 154 Ipswich Road in Boxford. Here seeking a special permit for a brewery and a brew pub at 58 Pulaski Street, building A, first floor.
Thank you. Is anyone in the audience in favor? Anyone in the audience in favor? Anyone in the audience opposing? Counselor Mitsoulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the councillor's information, I met with the two gentlemen who applied for this application in the mayor's office a week ago with Kurt Bellamans. And the first question I asked Kurt, is it an allowed use? Which I had my doubts on that. Kurt said it was, it's an allowed use by special permit. Now, councillors, he's looking to locate at 58 Pulaski Street and that's the old AC Lawrence Building. And the owner of that property is looking to promote that building and that property that he owns. And he has great ideas and he seems to be putting them together. If you walked in that building and you see the work he's starting to do, you'll see the investment he's made in it. Now, I am not a beer drinker, to be honest with you. I'd rather have a martini than a beer. So when this was proposed to me in front of the mayor and the owners and the investment these people are making, we're talking some very serious dollars here, to get into this type of business, they must know what they're doing because I even right now say to myself, how are they ever going to make money? But the gentleman explained to me how they do their business and I still didn't understand it, but this evening, one of the people I thought that would be here opposing this showed up earlier. We had a little meeting outside and I was very surprised that she knew what this was. As a matter of fact, she said that she follows these places. She'll go as far as Connecticut to travel, to frequent his establishment, all these types of businesses, which I don't know anything about. But he's willing to make that investment. They're fixing that property up. It's going to be tax revenue to the city. I did not see a person in the neighborhood oppose it. As a matter of fact, the neighborhood spoke in favor of it, which I was surprised. And most of you know that neighborhood and if something looks like it's going to be obstructive to the neighborhood, those neighbors will come in here and oppose it. I did not see that. And for what I've seen and the meeting I had with Kurt Bellamans and the mayor and the two gentlemen, I myself am in favor of it. But councillors, you probably know a lot more about beer than I do. You can ask any question you want, so be my guest.
Councillors, any councillors? Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Mitsoulis. Jim, number 58 is the first building on the right?
That's the first one, directly across the street from the roadhouse, but it's not the one that faces the street. There's three connecting buildings. It's the furthest one towards the end. I should have said this anyways, their parking will not be out front where the street is. It's on the side of the building, so you won't even see any cars there, so.
Okay, thank you. Paul, can you tell me where in the building you are? Your first floor?
Sure. So it is the first floor. If you were to drive by that property, you'd see an old timber loading dock. Right through the loading dock would be the first suite in the center of that building. It was previously an antique dealer. They've recently cleared out. We just signed a lease with the landlords, so yeah.
Advertising outside or signage outside?
The signage and advertising outside would be in concert and keeping with the landlord's advertising. So we've provided him with our logo. I'm assuming that he would come before whatever approval is necessary, but it'd be nothing specific that we would be doing or seeking tonight.
Paul comes highly recommended through different business people that I know, so I wish you well. Thank you.
Counselor Turco was first and then Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Paul. I hope you don't mind if I call you Paul. I didn't catch your last name. So Paul, food, what type? Will there be food? Because I'm not sure if food is allowed in the IL and Counselor Mitsoulis may know that I couldn't find anywhere where food was allowed. So will you be bringing it in or will you, any food at all?
No food, so not a restaurant, not a pub. Very limited operations. First couple of years, we expect to be open probably two days a week. One day pouring beers, one day selling cans. We do hope that someday, similar to the other craft breweries like Gentile and Notch, that we'd be able to partner with local bakeries and bring in pretzels. Could be bring your own food, but we do not anticipate that we would ever have any food produced at that site.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, through you to Counselor Mitsoulis. Counselor, if you don't mind, I would like to make it a condition that the fiscal 2018 taxes be paid according to the tax collector. The fourth quarter taxes for 2018 have not been paid by the building owner. So just if we can make that a contingency on the permit. And from my own knowledge, so it's Die Hard Fitness is on the lower level? This is the exact building and then the Mills at Pulaski is up above?
Yeah, Diane Culver is a neighbor below and was one of the reasons that I was attracted to the location. I actually work out there. I get tortured there through Diane frequently and just love where the building is starting and where it's going. And so I travel all the way from Boxford to my friends for that particular workout. We hope people will come to that location for the right service and we think we'll hopefully bring that.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a great idea. I think maybe a low carb beer for the Die Hard people downstairs would be a great idea. So thank you very much.
Other councillors, McGinn, besides McGinn? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the petitioner. Are you a going concern elsewhere or have you, do you have an operation elsewhere or is this your first endeavor?
This is the first endeavor. We hope to grow there. We've, we're going to start very slow, high quality, low volume. And we've actually laid out the next step within the suite that we're leasing. So we've got enough space within that 2,000 square feet for the next three to five years. And the building itself is still a little bit early days, so we've talked to the landlord about having, being part of their planning in the future, so.
Thank you. Have you had an opportunity to see the feedback from the Health Department on the application?
I have not.
Okay. It in part makes reference to the point that was raised by Counselor Turco about food. And I would just ask Counselor Mitsoulis, as you advance this, if you would be willing to make each of the points raised by the Health Department, conditions of the special permit, if you're so willing. So it addresses the food comment made by Counselor Turco. It raises a couple of other points. We don't have, we have one on the way prior to you coming to PBD, but this, so to the best of my knowledge, you're going to be the second one. I guess we had one years ago and it's gone on Walnut Street. But the reference in the Health Department's feedback about nuisance odors and the reference about pests control are two points that the Director of Health has raised as a result of talking to other communities where these are more prevalent and kind of getting some feedback from them about, you know, where issues have arisen. And those are a couple of the issues that have presented themselves, that there can be an odor that some people find objectionable and that you take steps to make sure that that doesn't become a nuisance condition for any of your butters. And the second and really important for PBD is that we've got a bit of a rodent issue in PBD, like so many communities, not only in the Commonwealth but across the country. It's a big issue. And in particular grain waste, which is a byproduct, is, can be a big attractor for rodents. So we need you to have a comprehensive plan to make sure that doesn't become an issue as a result of the byproduct of your process. Do you see any issue with any of those with respect to controlling odors and/or having a comprehensive plan to deal with your grain waste from the process?
No, but we, those are two points that we'll bring up to our design team to make sure that we include that in the final permit application designs. They're very familiar, myself, my background, so I, my day job is I work in medical device manufacturing, regulated heavily under the FDA. So, and I design the facilities and operate them. So pest control is something that I'm very familiar with. So we'll absolutely make sure that's called out on the plans. It makes sense, given the grains and the products that go into our beer, that that would be a concern. As far as the odors, we'll make sure that we can control the affluent with carbon filtration. We can easily accommodate that.
If you've dealt with FDA regulations, this should be a walk in the park for you. So I would just encourage you to take advantage of the knowledge that has, you know, that we're gathering in the Health Department. They're asking, especially with respect to food, that you have a conference with them on that ahead of time, should that, should that become part of your business plan. So again, Counselor Mitsoulis, if you could just make sure you include those, those points, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other councillors? The only thing I would add is that I welcome you, appreciate you spending your efforts and the money to come to PBD and certainly this location. And Counselor Mitsoulis certainly does his homework and certainly makes sure the people who move into his ward is the people that he wants. And I'm happy to hear that he's certainly in favor of this. I'm certainly in favor of it because of my exposure to the breweries. I know there's members here in City Hall who travels the whole New England for a nice pint. So I believe and I seen this in action, that it brings, it brings other businesses in. If it's not food, it's retail, it's the whole gamut. So I think the city is on the right track to attract these breweries coming here in PBD, especially taking locations that has been vacant or not used maybe in the best ways of commercial. So I have no proven, Counselor Mitsoulis.
Motion to close the public hearing, sir.
Close the public hearing. All, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Mitsoulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, before I make my motion, there's communications from the Fire Department, Health Department, the Collector's Office, and I want all these to be part of the motion. There's some corrections, but I also know that before you're allowed any permits, all these issues are addressed anyways, but I just want to make them part of the motion, part of granting of this permit. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve a special permit for Paul Don Hauser, CEO of Essex County Brewing Company LLC, Doing Business at 59 Pulaski Street, to establish a brewery and a brew pub. So move, Mr. Chairman.
You heard the motion. Roll call? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor McGinn.
On the motion, you know, just curious the way this is worded. When you, when the terminology brew pub is used here and maybe, I see Director Bellavance is here, maybe you could come up on this. Are we saying this is synonymous with tasting room?
Correct. That's the definition in the zoning ordinance. So there's no food allowed. It would be a tasting.
I think, yes, so tasting room is the defined term, right?
Correct.
So that's what we're approving here?
I think the zoning reads breweries, brew pubs, tasting rooms. I think that's what the definition.
Thank you. Thank you. So you think all three terms exist there?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Roll call.
Councillors O'Neill...
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Razagnall.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to nothing, three absent.
Moving to...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Move to hearing 4D. Counselor Sasla.
Yes. Motion to receive late communication from Attorney Theda Rigante.
So move. Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, counsel. So the late communication is, at this point, East Boston Savings Bank is requesting to withdraw their special permit application without prejudice. I have no issue with that and I'm willing to accept that.
You heard the motion? Roll call.
Councillors O'Neill...
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Charist.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing, two absent.
For, hearing four C. Counselor Saslaw?
Yes. I believe, motion to receive item psychotherapy is item eight L, requesting a continued special permit hearing to June 28, 2018.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Okay. Move. Counselor Saslaw?
Yes, Counsel. Motion to receive item eight O, request, or the petitioner to continue a special permit hearing to June 28, 2018. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Okay. Move. Counselor Saslaw?
Yes, Counsel. Motion to receive item eight O, request, or the petitioner to continue a special permit hearing to June 28, 2018. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Okay. Getting there. Reports in community committees. Counselor Saslaw?
Thank you. So earlier this evening, we had a committee meeting of the Municipal Marijuana Committee. That meeting was to review the host agreements submitted by the two entities that are interested in opening up a medical marijuana facility on Route One. All the councils were present except for Counselor Gravel. And on the meeting, we have an open and frank discussion led by myself and City Solicitor Smazinski. And we decided upon a recommendation, which I would like to thank Counsel McGinn, of a suggestion, rather than take their two documents, their host agreements, we have, we have actually asked that City Solicitor Smazinski come up with a draft that basically best represents our interest and covers us. And he will be making that draft along with input from Counsel Melville, excuse me, Counsel Melville, and also be seeking input from Sharon Cameron and the Chief Police and whatever else they feel would be helpful. That was, that agreement will be given to the City Council. Hopefully, we should get it, I believe, in a week. And then we will meet again in the subcommittee on June 28 to discuss that host agreement publicly and to also get agreement by the two parties that they will agree to the agreement that has been drawn up by the City Solicitor on behalf of the City Council. Thank you.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor, would you like to receive?
K and N.
K and M?
Motion to receive item eight K and motion to receive item eight N on behalf of the petitioners. So moved.
I'd like to report our executive session. We went into executive session to vote, to give the authority to the City Solicitor to engage in information sharing with Verizon relatively to the lawsuits and the granting of locations and requests. Heard, let's report out of executive session. Have a motion to accept. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Move to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counsel O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to, under suspension of rules, move to accept item eight H.
Eight H. Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor?
No further motions.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item seven A. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor?
No further motions.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item seven D and refer to the Finance Committee. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve the appointments listed in Communication seven C. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item seven D and refer to the Finance Committee. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item seven E and refer to the Finance Committee. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item seven F and refer to the Finance Committee. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item seven G and refer to the Finance Committee. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight B.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight C.
We're going to have to slow down a little bit. You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight D.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight F.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight G and refer to Legal Affairs. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight I and refer to item four C, the hearing earlier this evening. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight J.
Eight J. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, move to receive item eight M and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight P and set up a meeting.
You heard the motion.
On the motion, Mr. President, my expectation is this will be a meeting in advance of a regular council meeting, so it would not be a committee meeting. It would be a, a pre-meeting of the council, as we do from time to time.
A pre-meeting of the council?
It's, it doesn't really fit within a committee. It would be a, so we can schedule that at a convenient time. I know we don't have any convenient times coming in the near future.
Clerk, I understand. You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Counsel McGinn, thank you very much for getting us right along. Counsel Gould.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a co-motion with Counsel Mazzullis to have a handicap sign put up at 72 North End Street. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Also, a motion, co-motion with Counsel Mazzullis.
Advertise the ordinance. So moved.
Thank you.
Counselor?
I'd like to make, also make a co-motion with Counsel Mazzullis to have a one-way sign that appears to be about 11 or 12 feet tall on a telephone pole brought down to eye level or proper height at 11 rear Pound Lane. It's right outside of Wilson Square. And also, in conjunction with that, in the parking lot across the street from 11 rear Pound Lane, to have a right turn only that directs cars to go down Pound Lane, not come back up into 114 on Pound Lane. It's a one-way street going outbound, inbound, not outbound to 114. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? It's a vote.
And I'd just like to, in general, request that our fellow councilors, my, my fellow councilors, all of us, keep each other posted. And maybe there's a uniform way of doing it when you're having neighborhood meetings or other meetings of the body. I don't have Facebook, and I missed a meeting that Counselor Saslaw had, and it's not his fault. He put it on Facebook. But is there any way we can have all meetings, all neighborhood meetings funnel through Tim, so that we're all informed and none of us feel left out? And then it gets resentful when we're not brought up? So, Tim, is there, is there a good way to do that? Would you, could you coordinate? I know you're loaded and you do everything for us as it is. But if somebody's having a neighborhood meeting, can they go through you and you send it out via email on a regular basis so that none of us miss out on important meetings? Please. So moved. Thank you.
All set?
Yep. No further.
Counselor Saslaw?
No further motions.
Thank you.
Senator, suspension rules, motion to receive item seven B.
You heard the motion. All in favor? It's a vote.
And, yes. Counselor President, I'd like to make a motion, and before I make the motion, I'd like to explain the reason why. So obviously, we're going to be having a vote in the next couple of weeks regarding the zoning for recreational marijuana. I do not know where that vote's going to go, but whether it's a positive vote to enact the zoning ordinance or not, I do want to go back to the fact that the citizens of the Commonwealth requested the vote be done back in 2016. And we do, as a city, have a moratorium that's extended through the end of 2018. And I'd like, with that moratorium being in place, I would like to make a motion to put on the 2019 ballot November election the question of recreational marijuana, whether the residents of the city of Peabody would either like it or not like it. I know there's been a lot of discussion, and I think at the end of the day, it's just important to give it to the citizens and let them make that decision at the end of the day. So, so moved.
Anyone on them? Counsel Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think that that may be a little premature since we are going to vote. I would like to see the vote take place first and then move forward on a motion in that regards afterwards, if that's okay.
Counselor Saslaw?
So respectfully, I understand where, his concern, but to me, whether the vote is positive or negative, let the voters decide no matter what. So if we, if the ban goes into effect and we don't allow recreational marijuana, those people get an opportunity. And if the zoning ordinance does, does not go into effect, then let those people who aren't in favor of recreational marijuana make a decision. I think at the end of the day, no matter what the vote is on the 28th or the 12th, whatever meeting we have it, I think it's just coming upon us as a body to give it to the citizens and let them vote on it. And so I respectfully would not request, I, I'd like to still put the motion out there, please.
Counsel O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd briefly just comment that I'm not in favor of this motion. The residents of Peabody voted on November 16th, November 2016. The matter was settled, as far as I'm concerned.
Any other councilors? Counselor Saslaw?
So the question that they voted on 2016 is a totally different measure that I'm proposing. And I think, I think anyone in this body understands that. When they went to the ballot box in 2016, marijuana was illegal. Well, now it's legal. The question has changed. And as a matter of fact, on a daily basis, and some of my counselors have expressed to me concern about the state and where they are in enforcement. And that being said, I think if we put it back, I think 11 of 2019, there's going to be a lot of changes between now and then. Quite, quite frankly, one of the most, one of the biggest changes, quite frankly, might be where the federal government will rule marijuana not a Class I drug. And I believe, Counsel O'Neil, when you spoke at the legal subcommittee meeting, one of the reasons for your opposition was the fact that marijuana is still a Class I drug. So by November of 2019, the federal government might change that. And so for us to take that vote away from the citizens of Peabody, I think is just, you know, 11 people should not be deciding on an issue that is, A, that emotional, and B, the revenue out there. And there are many reasons why. So I think that if you, if that just stands, I can respect it, but I respectfully think that it's, it's not the decision of this body, it's the decision of the Peabody, of the citizens of Peabody. Once again, based upon the fact how close the vote was and how the pendulum is changing on a daily basis, and the debate that's happening in the state on a daily basis. And as I said, I'm, I'm not asking for a vote in November of 2018. I'm asking for a vote in November of 2019. I'm, I'm saying, I live with the moratorium. We'll see what happens with the, with the, with the vote of the zoning ban. And then whatever happens, good or bad, let the residents have an opportunity to vote.
Counsel Melville?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. With regards to Counselor Saslaw's motion, I think there is some relevance to the fact that the, the actual question asked in 2016 is vastly different from what the law that's been enacted. So I think there's something there. My only disagreement with regards to putting it on the ballot, or making that decision tonight, is that a retail establishment has not even opened up yet. And frankly, the retail establishment application, if you wanted to apply for a retail establishment, was just opened up to the public a few days ago. So we don't actually know the process yet. And I understand, well, we'll see, you know, we'll, 2019 is 18 months away. And if you were to, you know, ask me a year ago, when we would, when, would I suggest us having that referendum if it was to go on the ballot? I would say 2019. The problem is every time they start to move, they set these deadlines for when these retail establishments are going to be open, they've been moving them back. I would be stunned if anything is open July 1st, and according to what I understand, and that there might be less. I think that this question would be a lot more relevant three months from now, to see the first retail establishments open up, see what that process looks like. I vividly remember the medicinal marijuana rollout and how chaotic that was. So from my perspective, I think there is some validity to the fact that the question that was asked in 2016 might not reflect what the actual statute looks like today. I, I would agree with that. I do, however, would, I would suggest that tonight might not be the ideal time to make the decision on putting on the ballot, since we have not seen the rollout, we do not know what it looks like. And I think there's many more questions than there are answers right now, all of which would reflect it in what the actual terminology on that ballot question would look like. We've never discussed on-premise consumption. The Cannabis Control Commission spent weeks discussing it. We never discussed transportation. The Cannabis Control Commission discussed that for, for weeks on end. The idea that this body is prepared to talk about this is evident by the last discussion it had on it, when none of those things were discussed. And we do not control what the, the state could and could not enact within regulations that were not in place the last time this body talked about it. So as much as I do sympathize with the idea that this should go on the ballot, I think we are premature in doing so. I think there is a lot to learn from the other communities and how they roll this out. And I think the argument for pro-recreational marijuana could only be strengthened by a smooth[1646.21] rollout and more information that we get on that point. So I will not support the motion tonight. With that being said, just with the understanding that we want to see where this is going. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Counsel Rosinol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to echo a couple of points that Counsel Melville made. We don't even have the body as a whole right now. So I, I think by not having everybody speak their mind is a disservice to the members that aren't here this evening. But with that said, I, I do think this is a little bit premature. I, I know, as Counsel Melville pointed out, that the referendum that the voters voted on last time is, we are in a different ballpark than we were then. But right now, you have recreational marijuana potentially coming on board with eight people governing an entire state. To me, that's, it's going to be, in my opinion, the Wild, Wild West. And I agree with you, Counsel Sassla, the federal government may act on this sooner than 2019. And if it is a legal product, then that's going to change our decision-making before it could even get to the ballot on 2009, in 2019, as you proposed. So in my opinion, this is just kind of putting the cart before the horse. We already have motions in place and procedures in place to meet as a body, as a whole, discussing recreational marijuana. I think we let the process play out, and then if the federal government turns around and does change the rules of the game, we adjust at that point. I, I don't think the governing body that is existing right now for the state of Massachusetts regarding recreational marijuana is in the position to regulate this product in a manner that it should. And I think that's the reason why they keep pushing back the date of when they're going to unveil this. So I'm sorry, but I'm not going to be in favor of your motion at this particular moment. Thank you.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. So with all that being said, through Counsel Melville and Counselor Rosinol, I, I fully agree. I mean, it's, we're way behind on where we should be in this process, the state government's moving very quickly. Now, let me say this, all the points that you brought up, I believe that the people of Peabody are educated enough to take those into account and vote for themselves, similar to when they voted in 2016 by an 8% margin against marijuana. So, let me say this, I typically, I do not think that governing by referendum is a good way to go. I've heard Counselor Gravel say in the past that that's what we get elected to do, to make the tough decisions. Well, with that being said, this initiative started as a referendum of the people. The people brought this to the legislature. We didn't ask for it, the legislature didn't ask for it. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a group set forth to put this as a referendum, and then all of a sudden, it's an infinite wisdom, the Commonwealth decided to dump it in the lapses of local legislatures. And I'm not really sure that you can transfer from, I, I know you can, but should you? It was a referendum of the people, it should remain a referendum of the people. The people wanted it this way, they wanted to vote on it. I say we keep it on the same track that it, that it always was, let these people make an educated decision, because, I'll tell you, and I'm not afraid of losing votes or support or anything, because my intention was to likely not support, to support the proposed ban on recreational marijuana. With that being said, I, I truly do believe that 46% of the people believe that they're not being heard. Let them be heard, and you know what? At the end of 2019, in November, when they vote, wherever the chips may fall, they can't say that we, as a body of, right now, nine people decided their fate. They started the initiative, let it finish with, with their initiative, it's a democratic process, and I, I think that's the way it should go. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Counsel O'Neill, I promise I went back to you.
No, thank you, Mr. President. And real quick, you've all brought up good points. I, I want to just correct something Counsel Sassla said. In the many points that I gave in my reasons during the Legal Affairs Committee of why I was opposed to the not having the ban and making it full-time, I specifically mentioned that marijuana is a scheduled drug, and I reference it because, because of that reason, there isn't the research on marijuana because of the federal government's limitation. That was the reason, not because it's a Schedule I drug. I distinctly said it wasn't a moral issue. So, thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor McGinn.
Yeah, I would agree with the comments of counselors that termed this premature. I would put it in that category. And I know there are some counselors that are uncomfortable with making the decision. However, that is the law as it stands today. The law of the Commonwealth is that, is that this body is empowered to make this decision based on the results of the November 2016 election in the City of Peabody. So on substance, you know, I, I reject the argument that we should not make the decision. The law says we are able to make that decision, and I believe we should make that decision. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Counsel Rosinol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing, as a governing body, we're always accused of is doing things last minute, doing things behind the scenes. Look at what time it is. It's 10 past 10. We're having this discussion. This was not on the agenda, this was not a proposed discussion on a topic. I feel extremely uncomfortable even having this discussion without it being an agenda item, to be perfectly honest with you. To me, this is so premature, it, it's, it's a shame. But, thank you.
Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counsel McGinn. Peter, I agree, excuse me, Counsel McGinn, I, I agree that the law states that we make the decision. The law also states that we have the ability to put it on a, as a ballot initiative, and I believe our, our local charter says that we could put a ballot initiative out. So, yeah, I mean, we could say the law, but the law does read both ways, that we have the ability to put that on the local ballot if we choose. As far as Counsel Rosinol's comments, I agree that it's a discussion for, first of all, the meetings are televised, most people don't watch them night of anyway, but, right, well, with that, that being said, word will travel very quickly that it, that it's a discussion. Oh, we're not discussing anything crazy, we're, we're putting a vote out to the people of Peabody, and they can make their own decisions to that effect, if they feel that the vote was detrimental in any way, it's a choice they have, they're going to the, those that were going to go to the ballot box anywhere, go into the ballot box, and they could vote yea or nay that day. So, it's just my opinion, but thank you.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counsel Turco. I think where we par ways on this is that, yes, I agree, we can put any issue on the ballot, and I think you said you don't really favor governing by referendum. We can put any, anything on the ballot. However, the law is specific to this particular matter, contemplate putting it on the ballot under circumstances where the communities voted in favor in November of 2016 on this specific issue. So yes, we can, we can put it on the ballot. I'm not disputing that we don't have the right to put it on the ballot, just like we've put anything on the ballot, but we're, we're under no obligation to do so, and I think that's, I think we're all clear on that.
So Sassla, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm looking right at Sassla, I'm looking at you.
Thank you.
It's getting late.
With all due respect, Counsel Rosinol, whether it's 10 past 10 or 10 past 8, Counselor Sassla, making the motion is what this body's all about. So, and if I may, just for a second, that's what we're all about, and, and to be able to make the motion and have healthy debate that we have had, I think is important. That's a point of order. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Sassla.
So it is healthy debate, and it is good debate, and I thank you all for, for bringing it forward. And in the interest of, of wanting to obviously get a positive vote, I will, I will table this for now. I do appreciate what you said, Counsel Gould. Through the cheer of Counsel Rosinol, you know, I try to do my due diligence, it's motions, orders, and resolutions, it's not appropriate to be on the agenda. I check the chitty chatter, I want to respect for the process, so I knew no other way to do it, I, you know, and quite frankly, we had a meeting earlier tonight in the subcommittee where I wanted to make sure that it was appropriate to even do it, and we all heard that tonight. I do think if I'm going to walk my walk and talk my talk, then I think it is important to have a full body. So I respect, I respectfully, I agree with you, and, and that's one of the reasons why I will wait. And taking counselors who've spoken to me both publicly and personally about time, and it was brought up again tonight, you know, that's fine. There just has to come a point where we have to make a decision as a body. And, and, and obviously, I'm at the forefront of the issue, I get a lot of questions, I get a lot of phone calls, and at some point, to be quite frank with you, I want to move on from the issue, to be quite frank with you. And I do believe the proper way to do it is, at the end of the day, let the people vote. So seeing where I do want it to pass, I do want to see on the ballot, time is on our side, we'll see what happens on July 1st if they open up, if not August 1st, but I would, I would probably venture to say that, you know, within a 90-day period, I'll probably make the motion again, and, and be, and I'm respectful of everything that everyone said tonight, and I appreciate that, and thank you for the healthy debate, and I'll, and I'll remove the motion. I will.
Okay. Counsel Rosinol, quick.
Thank you. But my only point for it not being on the agenda is because this is a passionate topic for some people. And if they knew that this was going to be a discussion point, I think people would have been here to partake in the debate. I completely agree with you, Counsel Gould, and you, Counsel Sassla, that healthy debate, having discussion, having differences of opinion, that's what makes a democracy great. If everybody sat here and agreed on every single topic, A, you'd only be heading down one path and not necessarily see everything that's out there. So I completely agree with both of you gentlemen, that healthy debate and healthy discourse as well as healthy agreement is what moves government forward. My opinion basically was that by it not being on the agenda, and it being late, and discussed late, it just looks like we're trying to hide something. But, and, and I know we're not, and I understand that, and I understand that completely. That was my only point for the, point I made earlier. But I will say, I do think that it would be ideal situation if all of the members were here. Thank you.
Counsel Melville.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counsel Sassla, not to belabor the point, but if, if that, if the, if you should motion, bring that motion up again, if we had the language just that would, might be on the ballot, I think it would be a lot help, it would be helpful to me, and I think to the rest of the body on the decision-making, I think it's a, you know, it's definitely worthy of debate, and if the actual, we have the language that would be on there, there are a lot of the language that you're seeing throughout the state when this is, does go by referendum, by community to community, is extraordinarily specific to the location, to what on versus off-premise, if, if on-premise should ever be allowed, all of the different criteria that go into it. So part of my response to your motion tonight was based off of my fear of having just a blanket yes or no going on there. So I would, if that's the case, I would, I would like to see some of the language and be vetted that way. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Counselors, I'll just take this opportunity, Counsel Sassla, I appreciate you withdrawing your motion tonight. I know that Counsel Gravel wasn't able and had planned not to be here tonight, and I know Counsel Manning Martin had left, and I'm sure that both of them would had, want, want to say something about this. So I do appreciate you, you pulling it back, giving them the opportunity for knowing it'd be up for a discussion. So, thank you or not. If there's anything else, Counsel Sassla.
No further motions, thank you.
Counsel Masoulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three motions I'd like to have Public Works install a one-way sign on the bottom and the top of Palli Logus Street, and on Central and Union connecting to Palli Logus, directing people that that's a one-way also. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Masoulis.
I'd like to make a motion to have a handicap parking sign removed from 27 North Central Street. So moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And also, Mr. Chairman, I am making a request of the Peabody Municipal Light Plan to change a light at, in front of 25 North End Street. The light is burnt out now, needs to be replaced. So moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel, with this, your second motion, you'd like to rescind the motion that was made for the, rescind the ordinance that you made? Correct.
Right, yep.
Just want to make sure it's clear. Anything else, Counsel? Counsel Rosinol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to send a letter to aggregate reminding their drivers and their patrons not to use Roosevelt as a cut-through, because there is no truck ordinance for Roosevelt.
Heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Like to make a motion to, for the DPW to check a light pole at 5 West Livingston Drive. Looks like a plow hit it over the winter, and it's leaning over the street.
You heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Make a motion for the fire department to check a fire hydrant at 20 Truman Road. The cap is torn.
Heard the motion.
Looks like it's falling apart.
Heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And lastly, just a point of information, that the Relay for Life is happening at the high school. It starts tomorrow night at 3 o'clock and goes to Saturday. So, I know cancer touches a lot of us personally, so it's a great event to raise money for cancer research. Thank you.
It always is. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. First before, I do have a couple of motions, but I did want to say that I personally invited Counsel Tom Gould to my neighborhood meeting via telephone call. So, just for the record. Motions. Move to, move to amend section 1990, 19-94 of the Peabody zoning ordinance entitled Parking Prohibited, and add Veterans Memorial Drive, the northeast side of Veterans Memorial Drive, for the intersection of Lynn Street to a point of 50 feet east of the entrance gate to the front parking lot of the property located at 200 Lynn Street. And, Tim, I think you have that motion in writing via Captain Richards, so I'm glad, Allison, you didn't have to get it perfect.
Heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, could we, through you to Counsel Gould, could we schedule a meeting for community, industrial, and community development and maybe investigate what happened with the bike kiosk proposal, being that it's June, and I'd like to see maybe if we could get those out?
I would love to do that. Tim, that's been in limbo for a little while, so let's, let's get back at that if we could.
I think we were waiting for community development and park and recreation to come back with the proposal.
Yeah, but let's, let's hold their feet to the fire. Let's, let's schedule it. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Turco.
Heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to file a co-motion with Counsel Gould to install 24-inch solar-powered flashing crosswalk signs similar to those already sent via email via, by Counsel Gould and I to Jim Nicholas and Dave Terranzoni of Public Services at the crosswalks adjacent to, or excuse me, across from the Brown School, or leading to the Brown School on Lynn Street.
Counselor, if you, if I may, can you please talk to the point of why, because there's kids that are going back and forth across Lynn Street all day long, going to the parks, coming back?
Thank you. Actually, you know what? It's a, a great idea. So, yes, I think all of us have campaigned at St. Anne's Parish at some point. We've seen that even with a police officer in that crosswalk, it's extremely dangerous to become a very high-speed road, high-traveled road. There are a large amount of kids that live on, I'm going to call that because I'm directionally challenged, I'm going to say that that's the west side of Lynn Street where Wannigan's and, right, the, the Michael's Limousine side of, of Lynn Street. Lot of residents live on that side, the kids have to cross. There's one of, I think, five crosswalks that extend from Tilly's Farm up to County Street. These, these parents are concerned about crossing their children, and they would like some sort of signage, lit signage. They preferred one that Counsel Gould and I originally priced out, similar to one at St. Anne's, which was at a very high price. These signs, we're getting prices of $895 a solar mounted, they flash at the crosswalk when people are crossing. I think that's the least we could do to install a few of those at crossing points for the children of the Brown School, and we have two months, two and a half months to do it since school's out of session right now, so, thank you.
Heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you. And last motion, Mr. President, move to have the fire hydrant at 2 Quarry Terrace painted, if you could send that to Public Services.
Heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And I lied, I have one, a couple further. Move to receive item 8A and refer to the Public Services Committee Subcommittee.
Heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to receive and approve all papers being in order, item 9A Taxi License Transfer Sunrise Car Service License 39.
Heard the motion, heard, heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to receive and approve all papers being in order, block party, item 9B Block Party Requests, half of Walcott Street and all of Farnham Avenue for August 4th, 2018, Posigio Circle, July 4th, 2018, Alexandra Street, and Travis Terrace, July 4th, 2018.
You heard the motions, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to receive and approve all papers being in order, item 10A An Ordnance Amending Section 19-26 Obedience to Isolated Stop Signs of the Code of the City of Peabody. Excuse me, move to receive and adopt all papers being in order.
You heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to receive and adopt all papers being in order, item 10B An Ordnance Amending Section 19-81 Parking Prohibited Handicap Zone of the Code of the City of Peabody, 32 Union Street.
You heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
That's all, Mr. President.
No motions this evening, thank you.
Thank you. I have a few. I'd just like to make a co-motion with Counsel Sassla to the building commissioner to send a letter to National Grid, I believe, who's doing the, was doing the construction on Lowell Street from Street from 128 down, that we have an ordinance, when you tear up our sidewalks if they're cement, it needs to go back as cement, not as tar. And any other, also with that letter, if they can remind them that, of that ordinance, because I see marks all the way down from Forest Street all through down, to downtown, if they dig up the sidewalks, they need to replace it with cement. So move. You heard the motion. All in favor? It's a vote. And just as a informational, just over a year ago, I came to this committee and asked them for permission to be able to look for private funds to bring back the gazebo sunhouse that was in Emerson Park. This body unanimously gave me permission to do that, to seek private funds to restore that Emerson Park with the sunhouse, to where glory days of many, many people remember. I have, I have accomplished that. I do have a sponsor, a majority of the money. It will be rebuilt to the specs that was there before with the Department of Recreation and the mayor's office. And if some people can remember those, those days of that sunhouse, and is, again, the jewel of the city. Again, all of this will be done without $1 of taxpayers' money. So I have achieved that goal, and I appreciate the, the support this council has given me to seek that funds. And we'll be bringing out some more information on exactly the size. It's going to be at the same location as it was, if many people can remember. And I believe it looks similar, similar to what the Salem Willows' gazebo's. As, I think it's going to be enjoyable for all ages to enjoy. So just that being a point in order. The other thing is entertaining a thought from the resident council. Our last meeting is July 12. If it was a thoughts of the council to pony up $25 to be able to come in summer attire, because I'm sure this auditorium will be extremely hot, to pledge to, I guess, bet with everyone, or what's a better word for it?
Dressed down?
Yeah, dressed down, but it's a motion. $25 to go to the haven for hunger. So if the councils would like to get back to me to find out if that's something we like to do, it's probably would feel a lot better than sitting in these ties and jackets right now. So move, and that's it.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Gould.
Do you, would you like to speak about the zip trip that's coming to your ward next Friday?
Yes, thank you very much, Counselor. I guess the zip trip is coming to Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday, in Emerson Park. Again, the jewel of the parks, I think, in Peabody. I'm not sure of the time, at 8:00. So everyone who's available, come on down. This is something that'll be televised, and I think it's a great honor for them to come adhere to Peabody and Parks. Counselor Gould, would you like to add anything?
They go live at 8:00. There'll be food trucks, entertainment. It's going to be a big hoopla. So would love to have everyone come over and say hello. Thank you.
Hoopla. Anything else, Counsel, Clerk?
I just have one question. Move to receive item 8E and refer to municipal safety. So move.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn, have I missed any? Tim? Anything else? Okay, a move to adjourn. Thank you, counselors.